We'll call the meeting to order, we'll have some need to comply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
We'll call the members.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Trusty Trombley. Yep. Trusty Martin.
Here.
Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes in previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in previous meeting.
Second?
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll adjourn to the meeting minutes, you signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Foes. Motion approved as read. Okay. So you have more questions for the community, and I think Rachel's not here tonight. So I guess I'll move on with my report. I just wanted to remind everyone not to, that there's no parking on any village street between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. so that we can plow the streets. I don't think there was too many problems this time around, but it's winter and it's gonna be one storm after the other. Good job on the streets, Larry. Tell the guys, good job, sidewalks are walkable, great. Also want to congratulate Donna Barkum for completing her course in using state archives and retention schedules. And Larry, taking his managing local government and his zoning training that he got a lot of. That's all I had. Trusty Trombley?
Um, I just wanted to thank Larry and the crew for getting all of the Christmas lights up, very festive, the village looks nice. And, um...
Thanks, Kim. And Trusty Barton?
Shared Services Meeting, I'm P. E., with the engineers from Barton and Le Judas. They presented us with the shared services study findings to date in the villages of Champlain and Houses Point and Town Champlain. Excuse me. The final findings and/or their recommendations should be completed by the end of February 2010. Our next meeting, open to the public, is January 20th, 5:00 p.m., Village Office. The Superintendent of Public Works is inspecting local businesses regarding grease traps and grease logs. As of December 2nd, there were a large number of violations found that need to be corrected by the next inspection scheduled for July 4th, 2010. According to the Village of Champlain sanitary sewer law, fines will be assessed for violations that have not been corrected. To reinforce what the mayor just said about parking on the village streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. from November 1st till April 1st, this is to facilitate snow removal over the winter plowing season. I'd like to thank the village crew, good job with the lights, thanks to Champlain Telephone for the use of their bucket truck. And finally, I wish, I would like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season and a prosperous new year to everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Trusty Trombley?
I just want to reiterate that the Christmas decorations look great, and again, as Greg said, thank Champlain Telephone Company for the use of the truck. And that's all I have, I'm gonna make the report.
Thanks, Doc. Trusty Garrett?
It's time for the holiday decorating contest again. Judging will take place this week through next Sunday, so make sure your lights are on during the night, and they are also reviewed during daylight hours for presentation as well, so if you have the inflatables and you want your house judged, you need to keep everything up and going so that we get to see what it really looks like, both daylight and nighttime. Also, if we can discuss under new business, the GPS devices. I put the new unit that they had tested so it would pick up the Canadian frequencies in my vehicle, and they were able to track me at all times throughout the village, except when I kicked it and unplugged it a couple times. So it tracked very nicely all throughout, it tracked me all the way to Massachusetts and back without any issues. I went back roads through Vermont and down, so a lot of remote areas, and they were able to pick up at all times. So we'll bring that up under new business. And that's all I have. And we have a wonderful, wonderful Christmas, I know it's gonna be tough for many people to keep the faith and remember what Christmas is all about.
Thanks, Amy. Now the report of quick treasure?
Everyone's received their November revenue expense reports.
Okay, are there any additions to that, Elena?
Um, no. No, not the revenue and expense reports.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the warrant. There's some additions.
Give it to us, are we gonna do the resolution?
Yes, right after, right after we do the warrant.
Okay, but you have purchase request, you wanna do that after first?
Yeah, we'll do that after we give the warrant.
Okay. And we do have two additions to the warrant?
Okay.
One is for Riley's Outdoor Decor, it's for flame bulbs and clear bulbs for our Christmas lights. It's come out at 8:51:10.4, the amount is $222.15.
$221.50?
$222.15. And we have a bill from Williamson Law Book, 8:13:25.4, $98.24, those are my year-end tax warrants.
How much is that, Elena?
$98.24.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the abstract?
What?
Second?
Second. Amy had a soul in it.
Everything was moving at the same time.
Okay, are there any, any discussion on the warrant? If not, uh, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, we have the bill for the installing of the transfer switch, I'm taking it, that's all operational now, Larry?
Uh, no, in fact, he's doing it now.
Okay.
What we, what he did, I put this in as an emergency because I had to have the few votes, and I had to send him back something saying that we okay him to do it, so he's working on that transfer switch right now.
Okay.
So, it'll be done next week or so, whatever, so we can have it fired up, so he can get paid.
All right. Okay, entertain a motion to, uh, paper installing the transfer switch when it's completed?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Uh, Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore, aye. Okay, we also need to do a resolution for the bond for the snowplow truck. Elena, you wanna read that?
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a single axle truck, the snowplow equipment for the villages Champlain, Clinton County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $129,894, and authorizing the issuance of $60,000 serial bonds of said village to pay part of the cost thereof.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution?
So will.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? No, I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I was, I was gonna remind everybody that we were able to pay for half of that with the fund balance, so I was, I think a really good deal, and we saved some money by getting it this year, I was reading up on that, that would've cost us approximately $10,000 more to get a, what kind of a system was that called, Larry, I can't remember.
Here we have, here we have a system.
Yeah, so, I think that was a good move, and now the snow just held off, we're gonna return all. Garrett, you have any update on that?
Well, we're gonna, well.
We're gonna vote on that first. Have any vote on that?
No.
No.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Wait, is Woody's gonna change, change our mind?
No.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye.
Um, the gentleman up in Canton had two trucks ahead of us.
Okay.
Our trucks should be in Alden shortly here, and then goes up there, so he's had a couple to three weeks, so.
Is it in here, is it at, uh?
Well, it should be coming in here, so he's looking at probably the second week of January.
For everything, or?
Just to have it all, he's gonna come down and pick up our sanders, so we're gonna pick a day that the weather's kinda nice, 'cause it's the only sand that we have to sand with, so.
Yeah.
It's not looking so good.
It's like a buck Santa and pray for no snow.
We just have that old one, we used to put behind the truck and shovel it out.
Okay, well, we'll move on with the report from the superintendent, since Larry's all right up.
You just have a work log in front of you. Uh, right now, we're working on water meters, probably have a couple hours in the morning, they should be all done. The only thing I find, uh, two guys will usually go together, and one'll write in the book, the other will just keep walking from house to house, and we use our 800 radios, and when you put, no matter what you put it on, every time you're talking, you come through the numbers, it comes off the calendar, the town hears it or something. So, we're almost done now, but when the walkie-talkies come on sale, like $14, $15, I'd like to get a couple sets, and then it's central, it's right here for, with us talking back and forth, and we're not having traffic go all over the county with people reading water meters.
Well, our, our, our radios are on the 800 bigger?
Yes.
Band?
Yes, like when we were doing the tar up on Allen Street?
The police?
And I had a couple of them guys, and they got a little dirty on the radio, and Allen come up, 'cause they got a call from the county, so, and no matter what you put them on, people hear it, so.
Well, those walkie-talkies get picked up on baby monitors, so they're still gonna have to be here.
I know, but I mean, say, you know.
Yeah, those were emergency services, I think that's, they probably don't like that at the end.
They don't wanna buy, you know, buy an airline's up all day with that, because the days go and they keep reading the numbers, and I got a book, and I got my hand, and I just looked back and forth, and we did all outside the village and Main Street this morning. Uh, another thing is, uh, we have a lot of touchpads now to be, for the meter reading, and we have one gun, and if one guy goes out with a book or one gun, you've got three other guys with three books, and they're reading, and then you have to backtrack on all them other three streets to read the meters over again. So I'd like to purchase another meter reading gun.
How much does that cost?
Uh, I, probably around $500, if I get a, one that's a rebuilt one, but it'd be compatible with whatever we switch over to when we switch over. Probably get one cheaper than that.
What would be the purpose of having a tool, Larry?
Well, the thing is, like yesterday, Woody went out and read meters with meter gun, so today, we got three more books to read, so one guy'll take the meter gun, or two guys will go with two books with a meter gun and read, but then you got another guy that's reading, you have to backtrack that whole, two, three streets.
Right, if you go out with one book, half of them are meter reading, you have to read the gun.
Back and forth.
So you have to come back and get the gun, and then go through the book again.
Go through the whole street again.
Get the ones that you haven't, you couldn't get, because you didn't have the gun.
Say you do two houses that's got the old readers, and then you got a touchpad, then the next five, six are touchpad, you don't have a gun, you do all of them, then you have to go back and go all through that whole street again to read the book, the meters all over again.
So it's gonna save us a dime?
Well, yeah.
Would that come out of water administration equipment? Larry? Would that come out of the water administration equipment account?
Well, it probably should come out of both water and sewer.
Oh, true. Well, that account has to be in front of your money.
Yeah, but what if?
Half of our meters are the old type?
Yeah.
And half of them are touchpads?
Yeah. I agree, but what if we just had either one or just two men going through the whole street at the same time, so that the gun or?
Well, we did, we did that, that's why we read, we read almost two books all today, because I was in the truck, and Jimmy was on one side, and Terry was on the other side, and they had the gun, so if there was a gun across, if there was a meter gun across the street, they just swapped the gun back and forth, but we just went right up the street. But, if someone, like Woody went out with a book yesterday, and he's got the gun, so...
Right, you're, you're...
That's, I'm just trying to, we could probably get all the meters done in, in a day and a half, and not, you know, take four days to do it, 'cause you have to backtrack. Like today, we read two books, you know?
Does the gun read from the truck?
What's that?
Does the gun read from the truck?
No, you have to walk every house.
You have to be ready to buy it.
And you have to put it on, push the button.
Well, if you had two guns, you, you know, two guys could go out, and like you said, one could write, one could read, but if you got the gun, then you can just do the whole street and not have to go back and redo them, so.
Oh, wouldn't hurt to get one.
Yeah, we'll all check.
We're not gonna check them again until, for three months.
Well, that's what I said, yeah, we'll be done, the same with the walkie-talkies, if I find a deal on them, they were $14.99 for 16 miles, and they had $10 rebate on them, so I could've got a second one.
Well, there's something we had dropped, too, we probably should continue looking into like a grant for those remote readers that, you know, you can drive by, I know, I know there may not be any money out there, but I, I think we should look into that also, just to, uh, see if there's anything out there for them.
What about the additional round of local government efficiency grants?
That, that's only about shared resources.
Two municipalities, we cover the town of Champlain and the village of Champlain, there are two municipalities.
In, in fact, we probably, we probably should see the town and see if they're gonna buy a gun, because the town has touchpads and they can borrow our gun, so probably could swap, you know?
Right. There's a $400,000 money available here.
They're switching all the touchpads.
Anyway, I don't wanna get too deep into it, we should look into that also, because really, that's the ideal solution.
Yeah.
Long-term, not that we're gonna be able to do that right away, but I wanna re-cite that, that's really the, that's the way to go.
Did Don mention it, too? Barton and Judas, was that in one of our discussions?
Yes.
About new meters?
Yeah, and that's why you don't wanna go spend a lot on something, you know?
Okay.
That's it, besides cleaning our old dungeon.
Yeah, it's a very good job.
Do you have a plan for the ice rink going in, as we have lots of nice cold temperatures coming up, vacation is coming up, it would be really nice for the kids, 10 days, no school, to have a rink down there.
Wouldn't they get out of school?
They get out, uh, Wednesday, the 23rd.
Probably strap it together, there is a, a meter pit down there, used to be Al Martin's, and I think what we can do, 'cause when you put the fire holes in there, or off the hydrant, it keeps it too warm, and it gets freezing, cracks and stuff, I think if we, if we can pick up that meter pit and put a garden hose on it, and let it run slow, it would freeze more even.
Oh, okay.
Well, something you might wanna consider there, too, I noticed naturally, all the water seems to wanna go where the parking lot is, maybe you might wanna locate it there, because it seems to be the lowest spot, and the best ice, actually last year was in the parking lot.
Not the parking lot.
Well, we had it in the parking lot last year. It was on the Crestone last year.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, where the, where the tarmac started, there where that shack used to be?
Yeah.
A lot of water ran into there, and that was actually better ice than where the rink was, but just, just a thought. Anyway, okay, thanks a lot, Larry. Now, Elena, you read correspondence?
Correspondence from Ronald Hicks regarding his property at the end of Meadow Lane, letter to Ronald Trombley from Code's Office of Patrol regarding his building permit for 1163, 1165 Route 9, correspondence from Trida Insurance regarding Chad, four years late notice of claim filing, letter to Borderview Grocery regarding water, wastewater services from the village, letter to permit stating the village's intention to renew or working compensation with them, letters to area businesses from Superintendent Sorrell regarding grease trap and grease log violations, correspondence from Direct Subs regarding grease trap log, correspondence from O'Connell Armowitz regarding order allowing notice of claim for Chad four years.
Thanks, Elena. Yeah, and just, one thing I forgot to mention earlier, like Larry and Greg did a great job with the grease pits, getting to notify everybody what was required, and say thanks. The GSA meter pit, we went, visited with the GSA people last month, and they're gonna get back to us, I think they have money in for appropriation, it's just a matter of whether or not it goes through or not. Nothing new on the town Shazzy, Shazzy Services Request. Nothing on the zoning law changes, anyone else have any other old business? Okay, uh, moving on to new business then, uh, entertain a motion, the union has given us a letter that they desire to negotiate the next year's contract, the contract that's due next year, so, I would like to make a motion to hire Dan McKellup again this year to do the negotiations for us. Okay, motion, Kim?
Bigger.
Second, Greg? Any discussion?
Should we wait to see if we're not able to negotiate without hiring someone?
Uh, I, I think Kim might back me up on this, but I, I think we really could use somebody that's negotiated with public employees before.
We spent the year last year.
Uh, we spent a, we spent a year.
Two years ago, three years ago.
It really didn't work out that well, and I think if we would've had Dan right from the start, we maybe could've gotten it done a little quicker. We, we do need the expertise.
Can you guys make sure that this is your name before, or something?
Uh, actually, he has negotiated with several locals from the, from Deamster, so, he's very familiar with the people and everything, and I don't know, they seem to talk better than we do.
No.
I don't wanna spend another year on that. See, things seem to go fairly quick once Dan goes out, so, hopefully we'll have a lot less meetings, if he's available, I'm pretty sure he is. 'Cause I saw, saw him down in Poste, and he presented down there, so, he said he'd be available unless something changed. So anyways, are there any other further discussion? If not, Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Uh, Trusty Martin?
Aye.
Trusty Trombley?
Aye.
Trusty Garrett?
Aye.
And Mayor Moore, aye. Uh, the only other thing we had, Amy had, mentioned the GPS again, I'd like an opportunity to talk with you, we met with Sheriff Favreau, and he did mention about everybody being on the same, using the same equipment, I don't, we're putting in for a grant for cameras, but whatever the system is gonna be, it's gonna be compatible with what the sheriffs and state police have, so they would be able to access that system, say there was a problem or something, and he called them up, they would be able to access our system if they're compatible, and I, I'm not sure on that, but I'd like to talk with him a little bit about that, or you, to see if it makes a difference or not, I don't know if it does, but with the cameras, he did mention that, I know Larry was there with me, and if they're interchangeable, it makes the things a lot more valuable. As far as the information, like if there was a wreck, he mentioned that one thing with their GPS, and, and some of the other localities have the same, the same company, and somebody got one of the cloud trucks, or something got in a wreck, they, they were able to find it right away, 'cause they had the GPS, so Sheriff Troll was able to go right there and locate these people. Uh, I, I don't know if, if it is or anything, but I think, I think it's something we ought to look at, just to see if that's, if that's useful to us, or if there's, there's a value added by getting something that's compatible with them, and I, it may in fact be, I don't know, but it would be something I'd like to look into. 'Cause if we can get those, the cameras, that would be, you know, nice if they could access, and I guess the schools do that, too, Northeastern, like the sheriffs can access, or, or I think the state police also can access the cameras on the school grounds, so if they get a call, if there's something missed there, they can actually do a little scan ahead of time before they get there. So, I don't know if, I think we should look into that, just sort of heck of it, see if there's, like I said, any value added or not.
So what should I tell this company, 'cause they really want their equipment back if we're not gonna go forward with them?
Well, it sounds like it works, I guess the only thing I would, I would, you know, maybe, maybe talk to Dave Favreau about that, and see if there's any, you know, if there's a big value added for us, like, we're not out as much as the county or the state or whatever, but if there's a reason to coordinate with them, 'cause he did mention, like, a lot of places, they got different equipment, all over.
Different service.
And so, not everything works together. So, it would be useful if, if we can, I mean, if, if it's unreasonable, or it costs us a lot more money or something, I would have to look into that, but, so would you mind holding off on that till we find out?
So, how?
Good reason to do that?
Thank Favreau.
I wouldn't have known that before last week, but we just met them last week, and yeah, a lot, a lot of, a lot of very good information, and that's where the Homeland Security Grants go through, I guess they filter down at the county level, and then the county has the sheriff's department disperse the money for those, those types of grants, so, a little late getting in there, but there's still money in there, and I think anything that we can get would be very useful. Okay, was there any further in business?
I have one other item for us to consider, if it's even possible, you know, I'm working on my master's, and unfortunately, another required course is Monday night, and goes till 7:00. If I'm re-elected, um, starting in February, if we could change the meeting time to maybe Tuesdays or 7:00 at night, I'd have to go to, or I don't have 10 meetings for three months.
Well, just being three months.
I feel uncomfortable, yeah.
Well, uh, I don't know what anybody would wanna do, but, kinda like the idea of the Mondays, but if, if you could make it, it's not a wait.
If we could do it at 7:00, a half hour later?
Oh, well.
I mean, it may not even be the case, you know, once, this professor may let us out, it's a three-hour class, so it may be a case where they're like, okay, it's been long enough, you can go now.
When is, when is this gonna be?
Um, it starts at the end of January. So...
Three weeks, three weeks in February?
No, 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 it's for the three months, for the rest of the semester.
February, March?
Right, so February, March, April, and probably May, depends on the final calls.
I don't know, I'm up in the air, too, because I don't know where I'm gonna be working, so. Um, I would vote Tuesday same time instead of a later meeting, if I end up where I won't make a later meeting.
I'm good with Tuesday at 6:30, I hate to see meetings start at 7:00.
Okay, well, what we could do is make it the second Tuesday instead of the second Monday for the next four months, is that what we're talking?
Yeah, I can do January at regular time, but I just thought, right, I just wanted to let everyone have a heads up, start thinking about.
Starting February for three months.
Yeah. Unless I'm not re-elected, then it won't really matter.
Well, we can always change it back.
Right.
And May also?
Yeah.
May also, or?
Possibly. Well, no more in April, you know, as, as the schedules come out, and, and it may not even be necessary, once I get with the professor, you know, I found that a lot of these classes, after a couple hours, they're like, okay, that's enough, and they let you go.
And will that work for you, Kim, Greg?
Mm-hmm.
Tuesday works for me.
President?
Okay, Tuesday at 6:30, and it'll be the second Tuesday.
Thank you.
That may change the week in one of those months, but that week, we'll all know when it is, though. Okay, would you like to make a motion, Amy?
I'd like to make a motion for the month of February, March, April, possibly May, to change our meeting to the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 p.m.
Second motion?
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, any further discussion? Now, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. Do we need more further in new business, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Uh, second?
Second.
Second, Greg, any discussion? Not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried, motion, he needs a adjournment.